Morning, welcome everybody to the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees regular meeting. Call to order and roll call.
Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy, AD, HOC, agencies. We have had a meeting, I think our first meeting is next month. Hennessy United next third week.
All right, next week maybe?
Maybe next week. I'll have it sit April. Jack, you got anything?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Approval in the previous month meeting. Prove all, prove the claims as follows, general fund, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. The RSTF, twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. The library fund, a hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Previous month, purchase orders, three thousand, seventy-two dollars and forty cents.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have discussion, please.
Sure.
I've got a question for Dave. For quite a long time, you have voted against the consent agenda. And I'm just wondering if I'm missing something. Cause maybe I need to vote against it.
I'm getting, I'm getting ready to vote against it again tonight. I'm just not seeing in here what I think I should be seeing. You guys, you know, if you guys are good with it, I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
Is there, is there something we need to pull down and discuss?
No, no, there's, we need... How do I want to explain this? What I want to see is, I want to see what I call data analysis. And I want to see more information in here. Let me give you examples of... What more that I want to see in here? These, these are... The word approval of claims is on there, paragraph three point two. So when we vote, if I, if we, I said, let's say we, if we vote to approve this, I don't know what I'm approving. So I'm, what I'm saying is, is I would like that information chopped up into pieces. And I'm not saying I want to discuss it here in the meeting either. I've said before, that as long as the information comes out in the consent agenda, if I see what I want to see, I will vote for it hands down. And I tell you what, I have dropped the ball, and I'll, I'll admit that I've dropped the ball. Not just, I'm talking to you now because you're asking a question. Jared and Tiffany have invited me to meet with them and tell them what I want in here. And they were gonna try to see if they could provide that for me, and I have not done that. So I am guilty as charged of not meeting with Jared and Tiffany on this topic. Let me see, how do I want to further answer that? I didn't do a very good job of answering your question, did I?
Well, my concern is if you're seeing something I'm not. I don't want to vote, I don't want to vote to pass it. And with just four of us on the board, if you and I are about to vote against it, then I'm assuming the bills don't get paid.
I understand, Eric. And we actually had a three-person board one night, and I voted against it. And I don't know if you remember that or not. We had Randy missing one night, and I voted against it. You and Harold voted for it. And that was not a quorum, I don't think, but I did not say anything and I didn't complain.
You've got a quorum there, and I don't think that's one that requires a majority of the, of the board to approve. So I think that's still just a majority of who is there, so long as you have a quorum to start the meeting.
Yeah. So, let me give you, let me give you an example. So, and I'll ask Jared and/or Tiffany this, approval of claims. So, does that claim, the word claims is plural, okay? So, that means more than one, to me. And, but does it mean all of them? That's my question, does it mean all of them? So, what about, I know I sound like I'm on my soapbox here.
No, not paying attention.
That's okay.
That's okay.
I know you're not being disrespectful. I lost my train of thought. So what I'm trying to say is, what about credit card claims? What about debit card claims? What about RV sewage dump, you know, what about those claims? Why aren't all of those in here? And why isn't there at least some data analysis being done on them by either our town administrator or our treasurer to give us a more detailed idea of what we're doing here? I hope that makes sense, that's what's in my mind.
I mean, I, I would tell you from what I've seen in all of the other towns and cities I've dealt with, you get the claims list like what you've got there. That is, here are all of the things where somebody has told us we owe them money. I think they don't make it on that list unless they've went through the process that your city hall staff goes through and says, yep, that's one we budgeted for. It's something we had a purchase order on, it's went through that process. So, so I think some of that is happening, you just might not see it happening and all that. But that's a fair question to ask and probably good to see what that process is.
I don't see, I'm sorry, Jared, go ahead.
But, but the claims you're approving are only the ones that show up on that claims list. So you know, what I generally see other councils do, they'll kind of look through that. You all get very comfortable with the things that come through and, and you know, you see. So if you see, you know, a Harrison and Mecklenburg bill come through that's, you know, twenty thousand dollars, you're gonna be like, whoa, what, what happened? Why do we have that kind of a bill coming from our attorney, did he lose his mind? So you'll, you'll ask that question up here, get a copy of that invoice to be able to answer that question and make sure you're comfortable. And then that's why you have that claims list. If there's one that you want to bring to everybody's attention, you remove it from the, the list. And then you say, hey, why is this one so high? Or what is this, when I don't know what it is?
And... I, I'm still a bit confused, Dave, and I apologize for that.
That's okay, go ahead.
So we've got general fund claims listed, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten fifty. And claims in that amount, correct? I guess that's a Tiffany's question.
So if you will go to your claims attachment?
Uh huh, I can't.
It lists, it lists all the claims that is being paid. And it, at the end of the report, it shows you the different funds and how much that fund is in all of those claims. And the general fund, which is fund one hundred, it does show the twenty-seven, six, ten, fifty. So out of all of those claims listed, those checks that we're printing, twenty-seven thousand is coming out of the general fund. So all of that data is in there, and it's in your packet.
Okay. So there, there are no claims that aren't listed in these totals, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll even go a step further. If there are, you haven't approved them. Because you're approving the claims list as it is presented to you.
Correct.
So, you know, like I think, well, again, we'll use me as the example. I just got invoices and stuff out of my office like a week ago. Tiffany might not have even seen it yet. But I know she didn't get it early enough, I'm pretty sure she didn't, to get it in the list. So you're not approving that one yet, that will come next month. So, so only what's there is what you're approving.
And you speak of credit cards and debit, there, there are no debit cards. No debit cards. I can even get stuff from the bank if you guys would prefer that says there are no debit cards. And I know you speak of credit cards, which is Amazon, Staples, Sam's. Those would be listed in that claims list in your packet, under Staples, and it will show you everything. Amazon, it will show you everything.
It'll show the, or you tell me that it'll show the items purchased and by whom?
It will give you a description, and if you want to know items purchased and by whom, I bring in the claims, so we can pull it up if you have questions.
Those are the same claims that we are all signing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So by signing those claims, we're approving them? And then now we're coming into the meeting and approving them together?
No, you sign them afterwards.
We sign them afterwards, okay.
That was actually, I'm sorry, go ahead, Randy.
So we are seeing the itemized data after they've been approved, and we go to sign those claims. So we have the opportunity to see line by line everything that's ordered and everything that's there. It's all inside those packets. We just have to, whenever we go to sign them, they're all there.
Yeah, but right now, we're only seeing one fourth, because you see a fourth, Bert sees a fourth, Harold sees a fourth, and I see a fourth. So, you know, and that's...
But if you see something that's in this...
So like if you look right here, amazon.com credit in your vouchers that you see, it tells us that we're paying Amazon, sorry, it's upside, it's sideways, fifty-one dollars and two cents. And it says it was for air relief valve and cover for thermostat. So if you go, well, what, you know, who's signing for that? You can come into the office, because you guys get these on Friday. You can come into the office, sometimes even Thursday. You can come into the office Monday or Tuesday, and we can show you. Like I could go over here and pull out Amazon, because we have them alphabetized. Bobby goes through them and make sure that she has everything in it. And we could show you everything documented on that. Like purchase orders, like here's the purchase order request. So Alyssa did the purchase order request. And then that was the PO that was issued. And then here's where we went online and ordered it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I just wanted to show you...
Okay. Now, Bert, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go one more layer down, okay?
Okay.
I'm, I'm not done answering you if you, believe it or not.
Okay.
I've been hesitant to bring this topic up, but I'm going to tonight. What I'm talking about is the ongoing state forensic audit, okay? We all were interviewed by the auditors, all four of us, actually five, because Cliff is still here, okay? And I'm only talking about, I'm only talking about my interview. I'm not talking about anybody else's interviews. Is that, is that, everybody clear on that? Okay, all right. During my interview, I talked to Mr. Morley about, about this very topic. And he gave me his advice on what I should be seeing in this, in this consent agenda. And I explained to him that I was very gung ho about actually helping Tiffany put more in there to try to shorten the length of some of our meetings in some way, shape, or form. So don't get me wrong, I'm not shooting holes in this, in this consent agenda. I want that consent agenda to be fat. I want it to be extremely fat. And I want to vote for it every time I walk in here. But this is not what Morley told me I needed to be looking at. And I don't know if you remember it or not, and I don't know if you've kept all my emails. But you kept them all? Okay.
Well, I say that.
That's, that's okay.
I got it in the computer and some of them got lost.
I understand, I understand, you can't be perfect, I understand that. And I'm not calling you out on that, if you don't have them, that's fine, okay? I'm not beating her up. But what, what I'm trying to tell you is, is that I want to see more information in here. And that's another main reason that I vote no. I want her to put stuff in here that, that we don't need to discuss. I've, I've told you guys that I like to read, I can read at home and read the consent agenda five or 10 times if I want to. And I'll come in here and vote for it. I will. But again, tonight, there's not enough in here for me to want to vote for it. That's just, that's just the way I feel, and I'm not...
I understand. Like you said, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Right.
That, because it's been this way forever, which does, I'm not saying that makes it right.
Yeah, sure.
And I want to make sure that...
And, and don't, and don't get me...
Why are you seeing that I'm not seeing?
Don't get me wrong, I may be wrong as heck myself for voting no all the time. I may be, I don't know. But I'm just telling you, and I want to see more than what's in here. And I need, I need more detail. And Tiffany has just instructed me that I can come in here on Monday or Tuesday during the day, and I can ask for more information in, in this. And I will review my emails that I have at home to try to help you find what I sent you telling you what I wanted in here. Does that make sense? And I'm not doing it in a negative manner, I'm gonna do it in a positive manner.
I would like to know what, what you have been told, because I don't see a lot in this consent agenda that is that much different than what I'm used to elsewhere. So, so if there's something wrong here, it needs to get spread around.
Yes, sir.
So I would love to talk to you more about that.
I understand exactly what you're saying, I understand what Bert's saying. And we are a four-man board. And I understand that, at least right now, we are, you know. And Tiffany and I, I don't take that personal, I'm not beating you up by voting no on this stuff.
And I see, as the mayor, I, I see almost all the claims that are on the check. Except for what we...
Can I say something on the claims, though? You can come in and see any of the claims that the other guy has signed. We discussed it, we're gonna keep them all in the folder until the following week after everybody signed them. Nothing will be filed until the last person comes and signs, and we're gonna file them all at the same time. If you can come in at any time and see what Randy signed, Bert signed, Harold signed, at any time.
Okay, Shelley, thank you. Bert, I had one more thing I wanted to say to you. And I don't feel like, I don't feel like you're beating me up on this either.
No, I'm not.
Okay, you know, and, and I don't feel bad about it at all. I don't feel that you or Tiffany or Jared are beating me up, even though you guys probably want to every now and then. I don't feel that way at all. And that's all, that's it, unless you have something else you want to say.
No, I, that pretty well answered my questions. I've, I've just felt comfortable that our totals match. And my little iPad here won't come out tonight for some reason. But anyway, match what our breakdown is and everything. I just was curious if there was something else that I wasn't aware of. So we can proceed.
If I do get some information organized for Tiffany, I'll send it to her, then she could, you know, whatever, you can send it out to Bert and Randy and Harold if you want. Anything I send to you is, is open record anyway, so I'm not worried about you, who you're gonna share it with. Thank you, Bert. Thank you, Harold.
We already had a motion by Randy, seconded by me.
All right, Dave?
No.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Does it comment?
All those people up there, nobody's saying anything.
Town administrator report?
Okay, so, um, just to give you guys a touch base, in the, a packet, we're going to hopefully approve a resolution, which is a grant that we received from the, from the state for the, starting to redo Mitchell Road, from Seventh Street to Conoco Road. We were awarded four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. And we gotta put in a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. So to me, I think this is one thing that was brought to the board probably about three years ago. It was turned down by the board because they couldn't understand why it was gonna cost so much to do roads. But I'm glad that you guys decided to go for it because we were awarded. And hopefully we can continue on this, and we can get the whole thing done, that and, as well as Cemetery Road. The stage trying to help us with all of this oil-filled traffic, that's what it's all from, is that fund. Another thing is, I started this past week a leadership class with O-MAG. I'm in the fifth class, they started about two years ago. It's supposed to help with risk management with our insurance, because O-MAG is our insurance company. Just in the first one that I went to, I'm very impressed. And I hope when I get done in seven months, that I want to send some more of our people to, because it's talking about how to be a leader, not only with your heart, with your head, you gotta kind of find a balance of the two. And sometimes, some people are very straightforward, and some people are too kind, and you've got to find a balance in there. So I'm very excited about this. Plus, not only that, getting to know some more colleagues, like Perry, their co-enforcer, billing person, as well as Planca Cities, and different things are in there, so I'm able to make more connections. The water department has been, well, we're not in water, but I'm gonna continue on. The water department has been working on lines. We found a leak out by Royal Signs. It was a line that went across the highway and fed Eagle Wire Line and Quick Pump. No, for Eagle Wire Line. Well, we were gonna have to end up getting permits to go under the highway to fix it. So what we decided is to come down Conoco Road, they went in and put in a...
We put in a new two-inch hallway, going from the corner and tied it back in, and it's easy and capped off the old one.
And then not only that, it made us, it helped us loop. Am I not correct?
We're still gonna go on down to Quick Pump.
Yes, but once we get, once we get down to Quick Pump, then we'll be looped in instead of being a dead-in-line. So where it was at Conoco, it was a dead-in-line, so we were able to, were able to loop it in. So, other than that, they're getting ready for the winter weather. We've ordered sand, they've been out salting this afternoon, late this afternoon, trying to get ahead of the storm. I want to commend the, the people, they have been doing a marvelous job on, on trying to be, here we go again, we're trying to be proactive and not reactive. Other than that, I want to say kudos to all the people who've ran for board. I have never seen this in my, in my seventeen years and, or nineteen years with the town. So I, kudos to, to the citizens for, to wanting to get involved. And other than that, I think, unless you guys have any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. All right. Tiffany, I'm back on the, I'm back on the Mitchell Road thing. What about Cemetery? We had planned to do both?
It's a phase, it's a phase project. And so phase one, we're starting with Mitchell Road, and then we're going to work a little bit.
I got it, I got it. And now I'm back on the state auditors. Back in September, when I was signing some of my paperwork, I noticed a billing from them on, during September, for twenty-three man-hours of audit activity. Have you guys got any more of that since, since September?
I think we got one in like December, November, December, but it was only for about seven, six, six, six hours.
Okay.
So, but we have not received...
Yeah, so you've got no, no communications? And when they bill you, you just get a bill in the mail?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they have not contacted me since, gosh, it's been August?
Yeah, I kind of figured them out, contacted you in September. That's fine, I just, I'm just curious, I mean...
Well, in September, the bill that you signed in September would have been for August, so...
Right, I get, yeah, I see what you're saying. Thank you, talk out there.
Anyway, I was gonna go with on the Mitchell Road over there. I was talking Mike Saturday about that project over there, and he said if the county could help us in any way, they, they would. And I told him, you know, we're just in the phase of doing it, I don't know what he could do for us. But he did say that, you know, the county would try to help us, we can work the case. So I gave him a number, so... You know, and then again, there's three board, or there's three people out there in the audience now running. I appreciate you guys actually running for the office, you know? I guess there's what, seven of us here tonight? So, but two of them ain't, so probably gonna be one of the best elections we've had in the past twenty years. So let's have at it, guys. Keep it clean, so other schedule businesses.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you have any, you were talking about the audit, do you have any idea how much they have billed us for that audit so far?
Um, not off the rap, not off the top of my head. I can look into that and, I mean, and get it to you. Or I can even put that in my report next month.
Okay, good.
Approval, uh, resolution accepting the MRDAF grant for four-thousand-nine-hundred and, uh, four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars, project number SAP dash two-three-seven F LG to start repairs for Mitchell Road, which the town obligated for twenty-five percent of the proposed project cost.
Um, we got this paperwork in on Thursday, Friday, saying that we were awarded. I found out because I'd been talking to the city manager, he'd been watching the, for the meetings for them to approve them. And so when they, when he shared it, I seen us on the list, so I was excited. And then the next day, I got the actual award letter. So as soon as we, we have to sign the contract, then they have to sign it, or the resolution. Once we get it back, then we will get with the engineer, and they will start preparing the, the bid specs and coming out for bid with the project.
You're right, that four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, how much road would that actually do?
I think it was about a sixth of a mile, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow.
Yeah, but that is actually, I mean, I mean, taking it away and like starting fresh.
Oh, pulling up everything, okay, good.
But since it's a federal grant, you gotta put curves in and all that, right?
I'll have to chat with him, but I, I don't know exactly...
Tiffany, you, you, you had said this is going to happen in phases. What, how much are we gonna do in this first phase? And will that all be on Mitchell?
Yes, yes, we're gonna start with Mitchell, because Mitchell has been everyone's citizen's compliance.
Correct.
And so we're gonna start with Mitchell, complete Mitchell, and then go back down through...
Jack will be extremely happy. Sorry, what, that we'll face one complete, do you know how much? Am I asking like a quarter mile? A sixth, okay, wow.
Yeah, yeah, that's very much.
Wow. Cause I think, correct me on this if I'm wrong, and I may be, several years ago, I came into your office, I think I was mayor at the time, and said, let's find out what it would do, what it would take to redo Mitchell Road, and you made a phone call, and I think it was four-hundred-and-some thousand. Am I wrong?
No, it was four million.
Was it?
Mike told me...
My thought maybe it's gone up, right?
Mike Swarks told me that they just did a road, a mile section. And they ripped blacktop off and just relayed blacktop back down. It cost the county one-point-two million dollars for a mile. You know, and he said that road over there, the base, base of that road's in bad shape, so that they would, just the base alone, it would cost us money.
So will it be going back with asphalt, or will it be concrete?
It'll be asphalt.
Asphalt, okay.
They gotta build the base, which actually helped that road, helped that...
When we get to the sixth phase, it's gonna be time to start on the other end. So will, will this first...
We have a year to complete this project.
Okay. Will the first phase just involve Mitchell Road, or will it involve Cemetery? Have we done anything on Cemetery yet?
No, that's, we have a plan, the plan that you guys approved.
Right.
And...
And I apologize for asking all these questions.
And it starts with Mitchell. It does all of Mitchell.
I was thinking that was right, but I wanted to check my memory and make sure, so...
That's kinda like gonna be like a six-year plan, it only gonna be one six at a time.
Yes.
And the grant would probably be over with. Probably won't be able to do excellent or early.
Well, I'm hoping that we can figure out, like being our first one, like Pete Lawton, they went after two. They went out, they did it for two, two projects. So, if it's, and that would cost us like, I mean, our portion in this would be like three hundred and some odd thousand. So, it may be that we have enough in our streets, in our street restricted fund to where we can actually apply for more money next time.
Okay.
Because you can apply for up to a million.
Very good. I will make a motion to approve resolution accepting the MRDAF grant in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand for project number SAP two-three-seven-F-one-eleven-LG for repairs to Mitchell Road with the town's obligation of twenty-five percent of proposed, proposed project costs.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Presentation of the FY two, twenty twenty-four annual financial audit by Jake Winkler of Artisian Associates with a book accepted audit. Jake, come up. You come up here.
You're good wherever you feel comfortable.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for your opportunity to present the results of the audit, town financial statements for the year end June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately or fortunately, I'm not Jake Winkler. My name is Kenzie Duarte. I'm also a partner at Artis. Jake is sick. That's all right. He gets sick and he asked me to, to replace the presentation for him. Now, fortunately enough, bring good news, right? So, otherwise I would have been questioning whether he was truly sick or not. If you want to just get out of the presentation, right? But on the report, you do have the report with you on page five. That is our opinion letter. That's the first page that has our logo on the report. That is our opinion letter. And so, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above presented fairly in all material respects. So, essentially, we do, what I said, bring good news is that we have a unmodified opinion. What that means is that there will go material, there were no misstatements, uh, significant enough that had, that requires us to modify the opinion, right? So, it's good news that you do, that you have an unmodified report on the opinion side. Now, the financial statements are prepared on a modified cash basis, financial position. Do get a lot of those questions about that. Essentially, it's just another comprehensive basis of accounting that it is accepted by the state. It just has on note one of the financial statements. It does goes over what those items are that are considered on the modification of cash accounting. We conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards, generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as the government auditing standards. We are required to be independent of the town and to meet other ethical responsibilities and we were able to do so. We also, on this page right next to that, page six, there is about five bullet points that goes over our additional responsibilities throughout the audit. Now, additional to the schedules of the financial statements, there is, we include the notes to the financial statement, the disclosures. Those are essential to under, to the understanding of the data that gets, that's provided. Now, I do understand, I always mention that I do understand that going over a fifty-page report may be a, a little bit of a headache, right? So, I always encourage to go over the management discussion and analysis. That starts on page nine. And what that is, it includes basically a summary with some financial highlights as well as some projections of estimations of events for next year. Page thirty-nine of the report includes the budgetary comparison schedule, where it is the original budget, final budget versus the actual expenditures. And the very last two pages of the report, on page forty-seven, that is also known as the yellow, what is called Yellow Book Report. It is not an opinion, but it's a, a report essentially doing our audit. If we encounter any deficiencies that we are needing to, we will be required to include it in this report, right? But we're glad to announce that there was no deficiencies identified during our audit, audit for the year end in June thirty, twenty twenty-four. There, I also like to go over what we call an unpredictability test. Essentially, that is a surprise test that since we, for every town or city that we do our audits, two audits in a row, we bring a surprise test that management is not aware of. And this year, the testing was over identifying if there were any ghost employees in payroll. And we did, we selected a sample and there were no deficiencies or misstatements identified through the items there. Before I open it up for any questions or comments, and I apologize, I may not have all the details for this year's audit since I was not the partner on the job. So, I'll do my best for any comments and, and questions that you may have. But we did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management and there were no deficiencies or misstatements identified that needed to be reported and required to be included.
Randy, you got questions?
I don't have any questions.
Bert?
No.
Dave?
None, sir.
I don't have none.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I make a motion.
I was like, I kind of looked different, but I was like, okay, maybe loosen it.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit.
I'll second.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. If you want to leave, sir, you can.
Yeah.
Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
FY twenty-five budget amendment number one, two. Tiffany?
Budget amendment number one is adding, increasing the appropriations for general government, other services and charges for five thousand and then the cemetery, other services and charges for twenty-five hundred. Those, we've had some, we were just able to increase the appropriations because of the different, we've had more money coming in than what we had anticipated. Also, number two is for the fire capital outlay. That were, was for the parking lot that we did at the fire department. So, that would be in the restricted, the restricted emergency services is where we increased that to cover that parking lot expenses.
It's in restricted sales tax?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, in the quarterly financial, if you look on page five. Okay.
Make a motion to FY twenty-five budget minutes one and two.
Second.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Forty financial report ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Tiffany?
My computer was updating and not showing up on any of the things.
Do you guys, I mean, we've sent this out a couple of weeks ago. Do you guys have any questions on this? And I got this like the day before the last meeting and so, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to put it on the agenda. I thought I would give you guys some time to look at it for any questions.
Randy, you have any?
I don't have any questions.
Bert?
No.
Dave?
None.
Make a motion to approve the forty financial report ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion concerning King Fisher County District Two wanting to acquire the land to the west of the county barn located at one-twenty of Raton Street. Mike Spark, he was going to be here tonight, he got sick. Anyway, I'll tell you more, this is what he wants to do. I guess the cow palace is going to tear down and build a new county barn there. And what he's wanting to do is buy some land to the west of where our county, the county barns are, where, kind of down there where our soccer field is, to make a storage yard for rock and gravel. Because they have to have it, they have to have it chain link fenced in. So, they're wanting like five, ten acres down that way to, to take over, you know? From the edge of their fence, he thought maybe close to this where that the actual soccer field is. So, anyway, I didn't know how it all went about because on a weekend he approached me. But he could be here tonight, or he was here tonight, came and talked to Tiffany about it today. So, I know nothing could be taken care of tonight, but, you know, so that way we could get into, looking into maybe them purchasing some of the land.
Harold, are they, they're, they're wanting to tear down the cow palace and build a new shop there?
Yeah, I think it was like a fifty by one hundred, I think, shop.
Do you know what they're going to want to do with their old shop?
That he didn't tell me.
I just wonder if they're going to try and leave it standing and utilize it or something.
Oh, their own shop, no, they are going, yeah, they're going to leave it there.
They're going to leave it.
Yeah. They're going to chain, to chain link all the way to the edge of the street down that way to Oklahoma, go back that way. They want about, basically where their yard is at now, the west fence, they want to go straight to the west. And, you know, so then, like that first entrance, when you go down there, go in there, they're wanting that part more, that's right there all the way over to, basically where that, we've been dropping rock and gravel and all that stuff over the years.
I personally, and, and this is something I think we should all think about, but I personally, I would like to see us just give them that land. However legally we could do that would be up to Jared to figure out. But the county has been extremely helpful to the town in the past, helping us get the settlement out of both a park, pond, uh, roads and things that have really been an asset. And I think it would just be a move of good faith to continue that relationship by letting them have that.
That's what, me and Tiffany talked about that earlier today. We just don't know what the legal, uh, the legal stuff that.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that just a little bit. I mean, being that it's a governmental entity, there's probably a lot of different ways you can do something like that if that's the avenue you want to go.
Given, given a legal opportunity, I would vote with Bert on that. I agree with what Bert said. Those guys, I, I, you know, I've heard Tiffany talk about some of the stuff they've done for us and I'm, I'm, I'm in a good frame of mind on that myself.
Because you do a no-cost, like a ninety-nine-year lease or something like that, so you keep title to it? I don't know why you'd want to, but.
That's, like I said, that's all, you know?
Yeah, legal thing.
That'd be all it could do with Derek, right?
I mean, yeah, I think, I think you could probably find a way to make any of those work. It's just which way makes the most sense. Like I say, doesn't make sense to try to hold on to it for any reason. It's better to just be done with it, you know? But I think we, we can look at options and bring all of that back to you. Do you want us to go ahead and work with the county on that starting now? Or do you want us to bring options back to you next month to decide which way is best?
I think it'd be best to start working with the county right off the bat and, and, you know, just move forward. Everybody's. Randy?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Jared, do we need a motion to pursue?
No, I, I think you've given us guidance on what you'd like us to then try to bring back to you. So, I think that's good enough.
Okay, thank you.
New business? Says the comments. Councilperson's report. Randy?
I don't have anything.
Bert?
I, I just want to hand out a couple of kudos. Alyssa, first one's going to you and your departments. I, when y'all had the water leak down there by the old gym, I drove by that one day and I thought, oh no, there's a water leak there. And water leaks just don't last very long around you guys. And I really appreciate that. You guys getting in there and getting those things taken care of. And the other one, Tiffany, is for all your hard work on this grant. Four hundred ninety-three thousand dollar grant is major and that's a project that has needed to been done for a long time that we couldn't afford. So, again, thank you for, for your diligence in getting that for us.
And Bert?
Yeah.
Dave?
None, sir.
Lisa, this is actually for you. I worked for the, did a lot of work for OCC and concerning the wells out here, our water wells, the first two water wells we got, they're fixing to drill them two wells right there. And they recommended us to shut them two wells down while they're drilling as well. Because that's when, if they're drilling through that, that formation right there, they're likely to suck drilling mud and stuff like that into your, you know, into our wells and in our ponds and, and mess them up. So, they recommended that we, if we could, shut it down while they're drilling surface only. Because once they, once they do the surface, it'd be cemented in and all that stuff, you know, would be good to go back. So, you know, and they would, Jeff Levin, the OCC guy I talked to, or talked to me. And, and the reason that, he, he talked to me, I was out on a well plug and he was overseeing it. He's the, like second command in King Fisher County. And anyway, I was plugging a well and I called him about, you know, when I asked you the questions about how they even had a right to drill that close to our water wells, you know? And, you know, so it's whatever, you know, if you see a drilling rig moving, you know, and for some reason I don't see it, to, you know, I'll get in contact with Jeff and ask him to, you know, you know, see when they're actually start the date of drilling. And like I said, you know, I, I think them wells would only probably be down maybe two days. Two days, it doesn't take them very long to get through surface and cement, you know? So, you know, they shouldn't be drilling a rat hole or, you know, first, you know, setting the surface pipe and the long strings. But anyway, we shouldn't be down, the wells shouldn't be down about at least two to three days.
Harold, I think I saw the rat hole out there the other day. But I was going to suggest that you guys take a water sample as a baseline because.
We already did that. We've been in contact with Jared, we've been in contact with DEQ. I mean, we've been in contact with all of them, so.
And the Water Resources Board, you know, you've been.
Yep, all of them.
Like I said, he just knows, he just, like I said, he hasn't been contacted about, you know? So, he was just making sure that the county industry was protected.
Harold, what do you say when you ask him about drilling that close to the water well?
He said it shouldn't be allowed.
Well, there's a sign out there that tells you it's not allowed.
Well, there's a sign out there that tells you it's not allowed. Why wasn't it allowed? Did he?
They went to, they went to the board, you know, to get approval and and they honestly, it's one of them deals, I think the ball was dropped.
Exactly.
That, you know, they didn't come and get back with us, you know, because one of them deals that they took contacted the mineral rights owners out there and not us, you know?
Who should have gotten with us, corporation permission?
Yeah.
Well, big, big oil.
Well, they send out these, cause I've gotten them and I've sent them to our attorney when I get them, these little postcards.
But
And so.
And the reason, and one of the reasons is there's already, there's already a well out there in that section. It's been going for probably thirty years. So, you know, it was gonna be impossible for us to stop it anyway, since that one well's already there. And it's all around, you know, our water wells are all around it. So, you know, he just wants us to take precaution with our well. You know, like I said, if they drill and they get the surface pipe set, we'll be good to go, you know?
Shouldn't be a problem shutting down those three, the winners.
Yeah, no, we're running on the backside of them.
So
That one effect if we had it, heaven forbid, had a search of fire in the end of the water.
Yeah, I mean.
We have enough wellfields besides that one that we're able to pump, both pumps out at the water plant.
So anyway, I just wanna let that be out there, that way we can take care of it. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, who got it?
Randy.
Randy, all right. Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I want to welcome everybody to the County Hennessy Utility Authority.
Can we pause for a minute, Harold?
Yeah.
Okay. We gotta let her switch over. We might take like a two minute pause.
Dave's going to the bathroom.
Look out, Tim.
Coming through.
It takes her a minute to be able to close down that meeting and start. Yeah.
I'm ready.
I know, I appreciate it.
I, I was on right off the bat, my first thing is bring it.
Well, I knew you, I knew you.
I've told her before.
Kind of lined up, you know?
Kind of like Mark West laying a pipeline, Bert. They get there right away after they've already put it in the ground.
Yeah. Yep.
That big well always wins.
And then like I said, it's probably, that protest and all that stuff, it was probably on, you know, attorney fees, it would probably have been twenty, thirty thousand.
So it wouldn't have been me, you don't want me to. There's a voice club there that you gotta, you gotta know the lingo.
I know, I know.
I know enough about that world to be dangerous.
You know enough about it that way.
Exactly.
What's that saying, it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission?
Are we live just sitting here, Jack? We are.
Will you get up and dance for us, Bert?
This is where we need some, some jokes stored up for this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I've got an old video of Bert dancing, little stand up comedian.
Uh-oh.
You ready, Miss Gill?
I am.
I want to welcome everybody to the County Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees regular meeting. Call to order, roll call.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Amendments of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utilities Authority Fund, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Previous month's utilities authority fund, two hundred and seven dollars and sixteen cents. Accepted FY twenty twenty-four annual financial audit.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Who seconded that?
That is.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
System comments? Other scheduled business discussion, possible action to prove the water well lease agreement with the John Hiss Perel and Dean Hart Perel Revokeable Living Trust. The property is located in the south section of the section, southeast section four of section eighteen, eighteen north, six west. Tiffany?
I'm gonna turn this over to Jared because
Nothing too earth shattering with it, I just had one of the water contracts, water leases that you all have been under for several year, years that finally expired and they wanted a new lease, which you all had a very favorable lease with them in the, in the first place. So they wanted to modernize it a little bit. So just to kind of try to make that process easy, we used the last lease that you all had done kind of as a starting point. Cleaned a few things up in it and then worked with their attorney to try to get terms that worked and then started to work Tiffany to make sure the finances would work. And then this is where we landed. I think, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I think financially you think that this will be able to work. It won't put the town in a bind at all. I think the language looks okay and nothing too terribly out of the ordinary, nothing out of the ordinary at all, I guess. So I would recommend approval unless you all see something in there that concerns you.
Could you give us the financial details of it?
Yeah, it's in the lease.
I, I was just gonna do it for the camera.
Oh. Um, so we use the well seven lease agreement that we did with Merits. And we use that and we kind of looked at where we're at with the CPI and different things of the yearly payment. We had eighty acre feet with well seven, eighty acre feet with well eight that we're able to use. I will tell you that John Gorel, we were paying fifteen hundred dollars a year and could use all eighty acre feet. The well seven, it was, I think it's right around sixty cents right now at the CPI per fat listen gallons. And so what we've done is they want a set and we pay, I think, six thousand dollars or seventy-two hundred to them.
That's on the merit lease.
On the merit lease, yes. And so they wanted something to wear kind of similar. So we went with, we will the, it's sixty-two cents, it comes out sixty-two cents per, per thousand gallons is what we would be paying them. With a minimum, we would do a minimum annual payment of ninety-three hundred. But that would include fifteen million gallons. So that was so that's like forty-six acre feet. And we looked at that and so we will make sure that we pump at least forty-six acre feet to get our money.
Get our ninety-three hundred dollars for it.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's.
Thank you.
And one thing though, that Jared and I are gonna start linking into is all of our water wells and and Alyssa, all of our water wells, our, our permits and our leases. Cause we do have some unpermitted, unpermitted water rights that we had purchased. And so we're gonna be looking at how we can put some of these water rights into existing wells or plan for you know, trying to drill another well, you know, things like that to where we're not dependent. Yes, where we're not so dependent on other people. Because they wanted, at first when they came to us, they wanted to charge us what the wellfield would pay.
Oh.
And so I mean, we're getting into that, water is precious.
Absolutely.
But we need to get the town into a position where we don't have to depend on things and compete against the wellfield.
Well, and we wanna be planning for the future.
Absolutely.
Big fingers crossed as you're growing, things keep going that direction. You're gonna have to drill some more at some point in time anyway, so why don't we have the plan? You might not execute on it today, but at least you know in ten years what you're gonna do, so.
I make a motion that we approve water well lease agreement with the John Gorel and Dean Gorel Living Revokeable Living Trust for the property in the south half of the southeast quarter of section eighteen, eight north, six west.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
New business? System comments? Council Persons Report, Randy?
I don't have anything.
Bert?
No.
David?
Nothing, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.